We're having a, our budget meeting here, we're gonna have it about this time. And I'm handing it over to Mr. Perks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board in your package, you will see a document that compares the three budgets that were submitted, one by the governor, one by the House, and one by the Senate. Of course, at this time, they had not come to an agreement as far as the budget over the biennium. If you compare the amounts, or when I compared the amounts, the governor had originally submitted his budget back in December 2023, and it was updated January 16th, 2024, but the dollar amount did not change. And these will be monies that will be received from the state to Scott County. And all of these monies, this does not include any federal or state monies. But under the governor's proposed budget, Scott County would receive $54,041,603. Both the House and the Senate, and that is for the upcoming school year, 2024-25. Both the House and the Senate presented their budgets the middle of February, I want to say February 20th, but my date may be incorrect in that regard. But the House budget for Scott County totaled $56,020,528. And the Senate for Scott County version of their budget totaled $57,023,875. With these three different amounts, with these three pending approval of the General Assembly, there is a significance, a significant difference in each of these. And when you compare the House and the governor's budget, there's almost, it's almost $1.9 million greater. When you compare the Senate to the governor's, it's $2.9 million better. Generally speaking, the General Assembly usually agrees or will come to a consensus somewhere in between the House and the Senate versions of the budget. But in this document, it has a breakdown of not only K through 12 education, but also the difference in entities in which the budget supplies or provides monies for. And I know a lot of folks were more interested in, especially our teachers, the compensation end of it. If you will turn to page three of that document, within the governor's budget, he has proposed a 1% bonus, whatever the person, individual salary is for the upcoming school year. The House has provided, in their budget, a 3.375% increase for the 24-25, and also an additional 3.375 for the 25-26 school year. And in the Senate version, both the physical years are set at 3% increases. Again, the Senate version is extremely rich. I do not foresee that that will be approved by the General Assembly as a whole. I do feel it'll be a kind of a combination of both the House and the Senate. I do not have any other particular details in that regard. This, this being an even numbered year, this is a long session of the General Assembly, which means that they make 60 days. And the last day that they will convene is March 9. They will adjourn. On odd numbered years, it's a short version, a shorter period of time, they meet for 30 days. April 17th is the recommended day for the veto session. Hopefully, we will have more information, preferably, preferably by Wednesday or Thursday this week, because both chambers will need about 48 hours, once the consensus of the budget has been brought together. So that's kind of the budget in a nutshell. At this time, I cannot speak to any specifics, because I am not for sure what direction they're going to go. Does anyone have any questions? Me, at this time?
Having not been here previously, how does either of these compare to the current school budget?
It's an increase in terms of state monies, by all means. Of course, as, as we develop the budget for the upcoming school year, we start losing some of our SFA fund. So that'll be, our next budget will be without it, because it has come due. We have to have all that monies expended by September of this current year. So we're looking at already about $1.75 million difference, less. But those projects are well into play right now. It is an increase, and it's been a gradual increase for the last few years. Whenever I first became superintendent, Jason can attest to this, it was bare bones minimum. And over the time, we have been able to continue working through our salary scales, increasing the monies for our folks, and we will continue to do that. I wish I knew what the locality's contribution is gonna be. Within the Senate budget, if you'll notice there, they do require a matching amount, percentage, in order for us to get the state monies. The locality has to come up with X number of dollars. And we've had a situation a few years ago where we did not.
I'm aware of that.
So that's just a Senate percentage?
That's in the Senate, yes. There are some positive things in regards, they have lowered the VRS contribution. Every percentage point, or every hundredth of the percentage point makes a world of difference, so that has decreased. We will have a lower composite index, as I had shared with you before. Currently, our composite index is .1893. For the upcoming two school years, that amount, or that number has changed to .1872. And for those in the audience, when you hear the word or term composite index, think of a dollar bill. About 18.7, or 8, .187, 18 cents on the dollar is what the locality contributes, whereas about 82 cents on that dollar is what the state provides funding for the county. We were currently, we are third, having the third lowest composite index this upcoming biennium. We dropped, but it's still, we dropped to 12th lowest. But it's still under .2, which is a good thing for the locality. The most that any locality would contribute in terms of funding for any school division is .8. They still get that 20% from the state. The locality has to furnish 80% of the monies. We're on the opposite end of that. We get 80% of our funding from the state, and the locality, or 82% of funding from the state, and locality is about 18% of that. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments at this point in time? As soon as I do get the final figures, I will give you a comparison by the monies that were projected and what was approved. Think back to this year, they adjourned the General Assembly. When did they finally approve the budget? It was already after the physical year began. So hopefully, we won't have that situation come along. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's all that I have in regards to the budget update.
Thank you, Mr. Perks. I guess I've got a public comment. If anybody wanna address the board and ask any questions on the budget, if you can ask that. If not, I will adjourn here for a couple minutes, when we start back up at 6:00. Thank you. Call the order, our regular Scott County School Board March meeting. We're gonna stand and have a moment of silence. Thank you. I've got a list of names, y'all can keep standing there. I've got a list of names here. We've got some special guests coming to do the pledge for us. And just in case, we've got some extras. I might put Ms. Miller on the spot, and let them introduce all when they come up here. If you wanna come up here with them, they'll come up front. Okay? In case you have any extras, I've got a few names down. Ms. Miller, looks like you've got a few staff members here, too, if they want to join us. A few of our staff members, if they'd make a statement.
Robbie. Robbie. What's your last name?
Robbie Johnson.
Robbie Johnson. He is in first grade at Duffield.
Harlow.
Okay, what's your name?
Harlow.
Harlow, and she is in?
Pre-K.
Pre-K. Deesom Kirchner, and he's in?
Third grade.
Third grade.
Eighth grade.
And, what grade are you in?
Fourth.
Fourth grade.
I was born at Norman's, second grade.
Yeah, and?
Because I'm in second grade.
And?
Adeline Adams in kindergarten.
Our next item on the agenda is items to add to the agenda, and I don't have any approval agenda. Anybody got anything to add? If not, have a motion to approve.
I might get a motion.
Got a motion from Mr. Sally?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Mead, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, approval of amendments. Our last meeting was, of course, a February meeting. Y'all had any questions over amendments as they are written?
Make a motion.
Got a motion from Mr. Sal?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Hood, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, approval of claims. We've got plenty of needles in the month. Y'all got any particular question on a certain amount, on a certain purchase, or anything? We'll find out one of these gentlemen, and ask them to answer these questions for us. If not, I'll make a motion for approval of the claims.
Second.
Got a motion from me, got a second from Mr. Sally, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, public comments. Anyone wish to address the board at this time?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Perks, Mr. Perks, my name's Tim Attigan. I'm, I work for BDM, Regional Coordinator. And you talked about the budget and various different things a while ago, and I want to say thank you for the job that each of you all do. Because in my role now, I'm covering from Lee County to Highland County. So in this area, you know, oftentimes, we'll say the state stops at Roanoke. So I was in Highland County the other day, and they, they was telling me, it's about the same story. They said, "The state stops at Charlottesville." So it was Kyle Ronnick was hearing that. But I work with all the various different 911 centers and GIS shops. And one of the things that we're finding out is that it is just very critical for the core components that, having those telecommunicators and trying to fill those seats. And it's really difficult in getting those people in there. But this, just like the career and technical, the FCC LA programs, the leadership programs, different things. And some of the, the opportunities that I've been seeing is that it's really been beneficial to the 911 centers by, we're starting to do a little outreach to those, those sites, and 911 centers are being given some resources from students that may be interested in that as a goal in the future. So it's, I just want to say thank you for the job that you all do here as being the members of the board, and for the staff. Thank you very much.
It's okay, Ms. Ray, tonight, so when we work together, you work in 911, you did such an excellent job. Back then, I know we had a couple of projects that we worked with, and...
Really enjoyed that, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? Well, we thank you for the kind words. We don't get that very often. Or we shouldn't say that, but no. All right, anybody else wish to address the board? We're gonna move later on along to the approval of the 2024-25 school calendar and fringe benefits.
Good evening. I'm Ashley Holwerson. I'm the chair of our calendar and fringe benefits committee. I'm here on behalf of you. And except for you, I guess you have the copy of the 2024-2025 drafted proposed calendar. If there are any questions on that, I'd be happy to take them, or answer anything that I can.
I know you're an expert on this.
I'm an expert, I promise.
So if you got a, is there any major differences in this year? I know I've first looked at it a little while, but...
I'm totally not an expert, but we did have a couple of changes that were voted on. And one of the changes was to move the Friday before Labor Day, make that a three-day weekend, and then move that day to the day after Halloween. So we would have a five-day long, I guess a longer break, the day after Halloween, from November the 1st to Election Day. And then we also took a day from Christmas break, and a day from spring break, and took two days off of the end of the calendar. So our end date would be May the 23rd, and our dismissal at 1:00 p.m.
Want to start something a little earlier?
Sure, sure. I think the kids will be happy.
All right.
She did, she did excellent. She, she was right.
That's all right. Did I got any questions for her about the calendar?
We had taken Friday off before Election Day before, haven't we? You didn't say it, did you?
And we are going to be, well, if it has a...
Yeah, that's another change, right?
That would be the change. So we would move the Friday before Labor Day to the day after Halloween, which is November the 1st.
Friday before Election comes.
Yes.
That's what I thought, I saw that on here. And then, still kept the days in Thanksgiving break.
Yes.
Anyone else got a question or concern? If not, I'll break the ice. I'll make a motion for approval of our 2024-25 calendar.
I'll second.
Got a motion from me, and you got a second from Mr. Sally, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next agenda item, superintendent report, I'm gonna hand that over to Mr. Perks.
The fringe benefits?
Fringe benefits. If you wanna go, we're gonna discuss that with us, Mr. Perks.
Yes, that'd be great. All right, yes, we have the proposed fringe benefits. If you guys have any questions, I will try to answer this. Again, I'm not an expert. If you want me to read them aloud, I will. Would you like me to go ahead and read, or?
That's fine.
Okay.
Who are the eligible, it's all eligible employees?
All eligible employees.
Funding a step increase for all eligible employees.
Those will be, those will be employees under contract.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else have a question? So these are items that we'll discuss and come back to you. So don't need no approval, but just for discussion purposes. All right, anybody, anybody else has anything? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll hand it over to Mr. Perks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, in your package, you will see a spreadsheet of the allocations. This will be the fourth and final allocation that provides for each of the schools. We have done this in increments throughout the entire school year. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this document, I ask for your approval. The second semester, fourth quarter, 2023-24 allocations as presented.
I might get a motion.
Got a motion from Mr. Sally, got a second from Mr. Hood, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have, and it's hard to imagine, but we need to be thinking about this as well, because the year is quickly going by. Graduation dates for 2023-24 school year, you have that document, document before you with the days, as well as the range dates listed. Also ask the schools, the high schools, to list the awards programs as well that they have at each individual school. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to the graduation dates, I ask for your approval as presented.
Question, how many days could throw this off, if we happen to miss?
Well, let's hope we don't miss any of that.
We have some parental plan to prove.
Correct. We'll, we'll keep this as firm, and as long as we possibly can. That's the most honest answer I could give you, Mr. Perks. We still have one, one day left of our income, weather data, hope we don't have to use it. But then after that, we'll have to look back at our calendar. Just a little discussion level, you know, twin springs is May the 20th, 7:00. After Monday, and AC is Wednesday, May 22nd. My code is Thursday, May 23rd, 7:00. All these 7:00. And per calendar, our last day of school with dismissal at 1:00 is that Friday, May the 24th, as of right now. When I speak with the high school principals, I let them sort it out. And that's what they presented me with.
What I was concerned about in front of that, because I just talked about scheduling, it looks like that 23rd will be the day before regionals begin, so we should be...
That was one of the things I told them they have to consider, is looking ahead. We don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but needs to be considered.
I guess also, just to make sure on the awards program, that our schools are communicating with each other, especially with the parents who have children, the little ones.
Talking, you're talking about elementary.
Yeah, I think last year, we almost got into a situation where we scheduled about the same time, but it puts the parents in...
Think of programs, the stuff like...
May, May is a very packed month. We've got the beginning of our SOL and end of courts testing, along with all the awards programs, trying to finish out the school year, field trips, ball games. It's gonna get very hectic as, as the school year gets closer and closer to the end.
And rain dates, you play our game.
Rain dates.
Turn of time, yeah.
Everything else that goes on, very hectic. All right, I'll make a motion for approval of the 23-24 graduation and award dates.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second it then. I got a motion from Mr. Houseright, and I second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have, we have student number 25885. I can do these together.
You can.
And also student number 25825. They are requesting a verified credit, a local verified credit, in order to meet their high school graduation requirements, but I need board approval in order to award them a locally verified credit, as described there in the document before you. Unless there's any particular questions, I ask for your approval for each of these students, as such. I'll make that motion.
Motion from Mr. Sally?
Second.
Got a second from Ms. Edwards, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have is the January 2024 Head Start Financial Report. Unless there's any questions in regards to this document, I ask for your approval as presented.
Got a motion from Mr. Hood?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Houseright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have, there is a under enrollment plan that the Head Start program had to develop, and we will need approval... and we will need approval of this before it can be submitted. And again, what this plan details and maps out is trying to increase their numbers. Coach Houseright and myself were in a meeting in regards to this. They have to have, what was it, Coach, 90%?
Something like that would be good. They're close. I mean, they're about that.
Right, they're.
They may have it.
They're, they're in that general timeframe of 90% of capacity. But when this snapshot was taken, unfortunately, is a few percentage points less than that. And so they had to develop this enrollment plan, and that's why it's before you. As Coach made mention, they are, they're at that 90% or even better in terms of their enrollment. But again, when that snapshot was taken, they were a few percentage points less than that 90. So that's why they had to develop this plan. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this document, I ask your approval as presented.
Got a motion from Mr. Hood?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Mead. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next item we have, this is for informational purposes only. This is the director's report from Head Start for February 2024. Unless there's any questions in regards to this, I do want to say, I had to look on my phone real quick, had to pull up that document. Our current budget is $62,544,367. And again, I apologize, I usually have, have it stuffed in my notebook, but I didn't this time, of all times. Now, keep also going back to the budgets I made mention of, those amounts, that does not include federal monies or local monies. That is just monies from the state. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. All right, we've got agenda item, operations update by Assistant Superintendent Mr. Jason Smith.
I'm going to need to go over operational improvements within Scott County that's been put in place during the 23-24 school year, especially related to our Title IX training and our mandated reporting training. Providing your packet, some bullet points that we have looked and those improvements. I do want you to make note on the first one, and the increase oversight of our Title IX training. We do do Title IX training annually for our school employees. In that, I put outside contractors in that. That's not required on that. It is required that anytime that we go out and bid, that we put in there that we have verification that they are in compliance with background checks, so that I listed outside contractors in there. But every year, we do Title IX training for all of our employees. We've asked that, that verification be sent in to Ms. Robinette this year with our substitutes. Any new substitute that comes into Scott County is required to have that Title IX sexual harassment training. Our previous substitutes that we've had each year right now, what we're working through is refresher training for them over the summer, and we are looking at bringing in a sub notification program. It is an online program that we will have that we're able to push those documents out for them before they sub for us during the year. Of course, those employees would, will also include our coaches and our bus drivers also in that Title IX training. In addition to the Title IX training that we did at the beginning of the year, we worked and pulled training materials from the law firm Sands Anderson. They are the law firm that works with the state of Virginia and school systems on their Title IX training. We pulled that material and trained all of our administrators in a separate training in that with Title IX, and then required them to go back and train their staff in Title IX and send that verification to Ms. Robinette. In our evaluation process, we wanted to make sure that our administrators at the buildings were, again, doing those compliance trainings, and also if there were any reports that were coming to them, that they were filing those and keeping those in a secure location. So we made that part of the evaluation process this year, and then we verified that at their site visit. The other additional trainings that we did this year is in our online platform, Makina Records. We sent out the child abuse and neglect training module from the Virginia Department of Social Services. Generally, that's required previously every five years for license renewal, and now it's up to 10 years. But we made that mandated for our employees this year, for all of our employees through that module. We also worked with Scott County Department of Social Services to come in to do a separate training for all of our administrators, which include our principals, assistant principals. We also brought in our counselors, our school social workers, and our school psychologists also to have that mandated trainer, reporter training from DSS directly. We also updated our website to include sexual harassment videos, recognition of that. They are on elementary level and high school level. We've added that under our training portal on our sexual harassment. And we also have updated our PowerPoint training to reflect that Sands Anderson training that I talked about previously. Based on the recent recommendations we have, right now, what we are working with is a reporting portal. This is developed for our technology department, and it will be in electronic form that will be on our website that employees, students, community members can make a report of misconduct. This would then create an electronic record of that that would go to our principals, our assistant principals, and also our Title IX coordinator. And I've included a copy of what that portal will look like in your packet. We also are going to modify our student training, and in that student training, it will inform students' ability to self-report. If they choose to do that, they can, in that information, we will have a contact number for the local Department of Social Services, along with the Virginia hotline, and also for the out-of-state hotline if they choose to do that. And you also please note on your reporting portal that I've included for you also has that information for self-reporting if they choose to do that. The trainings that I talked about this year will carry into the, to the next year also. We will include those trainings again for this upcoming year. And in addition to that training, too, Sands Anderson that I talked about previously with the law firm, law firm that provides that Title IX training across the state, we have contracted with them. I put in your packet, will come to Scott County, but I have been corrected with Ms. Robinette. They will do a, they're going to remote in with us, but this training is specifically for Scott County. This is a live training, live in the sense that it is online with us, but we have contracted for them to come in and train again this summer during our Principals Institute for all of our administrators on Title IX. Right now, that training is scheduled for July 23rd, 2024 training. We're working right now on our communication to communicate this portal and self-reporting to get that out to our school communities and make them aware of those changes that we have. Mr. Chairman, board, is there any questions I can answer for you?
Is everything that is required, I'm sure with Sands Anderson from the Virginia power for 63.2 and 1509, so that covers all of them? As well as anything that comes out of the D O A?
What's that? It, it is, because we're talking about Title IX training, 63.2, 1509, child abuse and neglect. But obviously, those can go in potentially, so.
Yeah, and then there's the 22.1 and 279 and all that.
Correct.
Chairman, board, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. My understanding, we need to enter into closed meeting.
Yes, I move to be entered into closed meeting to discuss candidates for employment and the assignment of some Head Start personnel, teachers, teaching assistants, coaches, secretaries, cafeteria staff, staff as provided in section 2.2, 3711, A1 of Cove of Virginia as amended.
I'll second. I've got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're going to turn the clock. Thank you.